Well, buenos días, todos. This public hearing by the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Management, and your Guam National Guard is hereby called to order. Today is Thursday, July 24, 2025, and the time is now 8:30 a.m. For the record and in accordance with the open government law, notices for this hearing were sent out on July 16, 2025, and again on July 22, 2025. This hearing was also published on the Guam Legislature website and the Guam Public Notice website. Joining me here this morning are committee members, the Vice Speaker and Senator Tony Ada, also as well as our colleagues that are present, Senator Telo Taidegui and Senator Chris Duennas. So just thank you, Senators, for joining me this morning for this hearing. Before we proceed with the discussion today, I'd like to first provide some general rules of conduct for those that are in attendance this morning. The conduct of this hearing shall be as follows. Written comments or presentations shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide my legislative staff with your written comments for photocopying. Comments may be read, and I ask that lengthy presentation should be summarized to about five minutes. Those offering comments will be allowed to present written or oral testimony. Once you are done, please remain in the room, if you could, for questions or additional comments as may be desired by members of the committee. Questions and comments shall be confined to the nature of the agenda, and today's public hearing agenda covers Bill 158-38-COR, authored by Vice Speaker V. Anthony Ada and Senators Christopher Duennas, Jesse Lujan, Chris Barnett, Joe San Augustine, Tina Munya Barnes, and Shelley Calvo, which is an act to add a new subsection 77108 to Chapter 77, Title 10, and to repeal Section 4 of Public Law 30-202 relative to authorizing the Guam Police Department to hire its own attorney. For the record, the committee invited the following individuals and agencies to participate in today's hearing: Chief Steven Ignacio, the Chief of the Guam Police Department, and our Attorney General of Guam, Douglas Moylan. Additionally, the Bureau of Budget and Management Research provided a fiscal note on Bill 158-38-COR dated July 14, 2025. And I'll just get right to the comments. BBMR writes this: "The proposed legislation intends to authorize the Guam Police Department to employ its own attorney to assist and represent it in all civil matters and remove the Office of the Attorney General from providing legal services. The Bureau notes that there is no funding source identified for this fiscal impact. Per comments provided by the GPD, the estimated cost impact for hiring its own attorney is $186,264, which is not covered under the department's annual budget. This will consist of personnel costs of $124,244 and operational costs, i.e. office equipment, office space rent, official vehicle, et cetera, in the cost of $62,020." At this time, the Chair will invite individuals who wish to testify on Bill 158-38-COR to take a seat before the committee. And before speaking, individuals who wish to make a presentation shall first be recognized by the Chair and shall state their name for record purposes. If I can also, I want to welcome to up here to the dais, taking pictures is our fellow Senator Chris Barnett as well. Thank you, Senator, for being with us this morning. The order of questioning will begin with the panels of Senators, who shall each have five minutes to ask their questions. The time allotted to each Senator does not include responses that are provided by those testifying. Personal inferences about the character or motive of any Senator or any individual commenting is not permitted. Any violations of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing room. For this particular proceeding, individuals who fail to maintain proper form decorum may be restricted from providing oral testimony and/or may be asked to leave or be escorted and removed from this room. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in this public hearing room. I would like to invite, first, let me ask those that are testifying, I believe, on the record. We have both our Attorney General of Guam, Douglas Moylan, and we also have our Chief of Police, Steve Ignacio. Why don't you come up here real quickly while we're able to? In the meantime, I would like to now invite our Vice Speaker, Tony Ada, the author of Bill 158-38-COR, to provide his opening remarks on this measure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, everyone, and thank you for being here at the public hearing for Bill 158-38-COR. Mr. Chairman, this bill is a complete 180-degree turn in the way GPD hires its attorney. The bill reenacts the provisions of GPD's enabling laws that were codified in Subsection 77108 of 10GCA prior to its repeal by Public Law 30-202. This original language that is being restored by this bill was enacted by Public Law 24-023. The unusual complication that this bill will clarify relates to the authority for GPD to use an attorney appointed by the Office of the Attorney General. This provision of law enacted by Public Law 30-202 was never codified. Nonetheless, the language will be repealed by the enactment of this bill, and the language from Public Law 24-023 will be restored, thus giving GPD the full authority to hire its own attorney for its exclusive use. I'm not sure of the history behind the attorney position, but it appears to be a continual problem for GPD to have reliable and consistent legal representation. This bill does nothing new. It just simply restores the law as it was originally intended to. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Ada, for your opening remarks. And I also like to recognize another member of the committee that's with us this morning, Senator Sabrina Salas-Mattonani. Thank you, Senator, for being with us today as well. Now, before we begin with testimonies, the committee requests those who have, again, signed in to provide verbal testimony on Bill 158 to please state their name for the record, the name of their organization or agency, if their testimony is being provided on behalf of that entity, and whether they support or oppose Bill 158-38-COR. Thank you so very much. Let me go ahead and begin, and I'll defer to our elected Attorney General. Attorney General Doug Moylan, you have the floor. You're recognized.
Hola, Sen. Gomatalto, Vice Speaker Ada, Senator Taidegui, Senator Duennas, Senator Barnett, as well as Senator Salas-Mattonani. It's not often that you get a government official, let alone a democratically-elected leader, saying, "Stop, let me do the work." Well, this is exactly what I'm here to say to you, leaders, about Bill 158-38. The Office of the Attorney General was made constitutional organic act for a reason. It was so the people of Guam had direct control over their attorney. Plain and simple. Congress prevented some other elected or non-elected official from hiring an attorney to do their bidding without direct accountability to our voters. Bill 158-38 is not just unconstitutional. More importantly, it is undemocratic. It takes away the democratically-elected attorney from directly protecting the voters and people of Guam and their legal interests at the Guam Police Department. An attorney general is able to detect wrongdoing and to use the people's power to criminally prosecute government officials who break Guam's laws. No other private attorney or hired lawyer can do this. The AG is chosen as a temporary employee of the people to serve for four years. These attorneys, who the governor or chief of police may hire, do not have either the authority to criminally prosecute nor the selection by our people. The threat of criminal prosecution against any government official is a strong deterrent for them to break our laws. Pretty straightforward. Break the law and potentially lose your home by needing to sell it to pay for a criminal defense attorney to stay out of jail. We saw this in the Trump administration. Only a democratically-elected attorney general can achieve such results, which keep our government clean and accountable to the people. That hired lawyer did not put himself out there, advertise his or her credentials, background, training, education, or political platform to promise you, voters, people, how they would serve our people. And in this case, it would be at the Guam Police Department. That private lawyer did not go through the crucible of an election to compete for the people's choice of an attorney. Let's look at it differently. When you shop for an attorney to represent you, how many of you rely upon someone else to select that attorney when it's your money? No, any of you who have needed an attorney, quite frankly, look up the available attorneys, ask around about the reputation of a lawyer to win, set up an appointment to meet with the attorney to discuss your case, check your bank accounts to see how much you will need to pay them, and then hire that attorney. Let's be real. You select and hire an attorney after a long process, and a bond of trust is created between you, as the client, and your attorney. You then expect that attorney to be the most loyal, dedicated, and capable pit bull to win. It's your money. You select your attorney. Selecting your attorney at the Guam Police Department or any part of this government is no different. The only difference is that you, as a collective group of voters, by majority decision, select an attorney general. Do not forget that we are all stewards of the people who elected us into office. The non-elected leaders must remember that the people of Guam place each one of them into office and should not be cutting off direct control of any position that Congress and our legislature have mandated to serve. The Attorney General of Guam shall be the chief legal officer of the government of Guam. That's in Congress's statute, that's in our organic act, that is our constitution. 48 United States Code, Section 1421-GD1. Period. This bill is patently unconstitutional, and if passed, I will simply file a civil action in the court to strike it down. The people who elected me in 2022 demand no less. Let's not sugarcoat it. Bill 158-38 supports the governor's attack upon my hiring prosecutors and assistant AGs as the people mandated that I do to serve and protect them. Instead, let's discuss a much better approach. The solution to Bill 158-38's constitutional infirmity must be to simply appropriate our people's scarce taxpayer money that you would have paid to the Guam Police Department so that I can hire an assistant attorney general who will be accountable to this democratically-elected attorney general. As has been in the practice of the past and currently used as our supply of attorneys allow, a memorandum of understanding is entered into between a department and the AG to assign an attorney to a department that remains an assistant attorney general under the democratically-elected AG's supervision. That assistant AG is also a criminal prosecutor that can refer to the AG for prosecution, criminal wrongdoing in the people's government. Since 2023, the Supreme Court of Guam has publicly recognized that Guam lacks sufficient attorneys to meet the private and government's legal needs. My management staff is effective and efficient. For the past two years, we have been and continue to recruit off-island attorneys to serve our client. We have also been providing the chief legal assistance as he requests. As a matter of fact, for the past two and a half years, I daily answer calls from GPD, airport, port authority, and conservation officers on a 24/7 basis asking for legal advice. It's only a matter of time before we are able to assign a full-time attorney to GPD. All you need to do is appropriate the money, or the governor can make the money immediately available, and I will hire an attorney. Parsing out the AG's duties is not the solution and will only cost more and get less productivity. Centralizing not only the leadership, but the legal resources has been accepted practice in the federal model, all 50 states, and four U.S. territories in the CNMI. I've provided a copy of our 2026 budget bill, wherein we identify 96 assistant AGs to properly staff the AG's office to do all the work required of us. And this is the document that we've circulated among our leaders in the legislature. Criminal prosecution, government corruption, child support, family court, advising departments, boards, and commissions, consumer protection, and providing litigators and appellate counsel comprise what this government needs for its legal needs. It's common knowledge that among attorneys general throughout the United States, that the benefits and purpose of an attorney general are threefold. The attorney general directly protects the people's legal interests, creates uniformity of legal policy in a government versus the costly and disparate castle building among different government officials and private attorneys, and saves money for the taxpayers with salaried assistant AGs versus hourly or contract private attorneys. Bill 158-38, as written, erodes all three benefits for the people of Guam, making government operations more expensive and less effective. And by the way, that recent statute that you passed between my first term and this term to require the attorney general to, throughout the government, review over 500,000 procurements embodies what I'm saying. There's a reason why the senators of the past wanted the attorney general involved in the 5150 review of over 500,000 procurements. It's because we are the stop valve, one location, not these private attorneys hired by especially the autonomous agencies. Finally, I wish to give my highest praise to Chief Steve Ignacio, to his command staff, and to all the men and women police officers who have done an outstanding job since I took office in January 2023, arresting criminals and investigations to keep us safe. Teamwork exemplifies the cooperation, coordination, and mutual professional respect between the Chief of Police and the Attorney General Moylan administration. The beneficiaries of our teamwork has been our people with the number of jury trial wins and the ever-increasing criminals being jailed to separate them from our crime victims and law-abiding residents. Give to the governor and chief of police what is theirs, and give to the people of Guam and the attorney that they elect that which is his. Thank you for this opportunity to comment, Senators.
Yes, thank you, Attorney General Moylan, and thank you to your staff for being with us this morning as well. And thank you all for your collective service to the people of Guam. At this time, let me now yield to our Chief of Police, Steve Ignacio. You can proceed.
Buenos dias, and thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony in strong support of Bill 158-38, an act to add a new 77108 to Chapter 77, Title 10, and to repeal Section 4 of Public Law 30-202 relative to authorizing the Guam Police Department to hire its own attorney. Buenos dias, Senator Gomatalto, Vice Speaker Ada, Senator Duennas, Senators Mattonani, Senator Barnett, and Senator Taidegui. I am Steven C. Ignacio, Chief of Police for the Guam Police Department. I am submitting this testimony. First and foremost, I want to express our sincere appreciation to the Public Safety Committee for their continued support and collaboration. Your partnership is essential for maintaining the level of public safety services that our island community expects and deserves, while also promoting operational efficiency and fiscal accountability. The Guam Police Department is the primary agency responsible for enforcing the laws of Guam every day. However, we operate without dedicated in-house legal support. As legal issues related to policing become increasingly complex, urgent, and subject to public and judicial scrutiny, our department must rely on external legal services. Unfortunately, these services are not always readily available or integrated into our department's structure. This has resulted in critical gaps in access to timely, mission-specific legal guidance. The Guam Police Department wants to maintain its own in-house legal counsel, a resource that provided direct, timely, and department-specific legal guidance. However, this capability was removed with the passage of Public Law 30-202. A review of legislative records and public testimony indicates that GPD leadership, at the time, strongly opposed this measure. The rationale for the bill, as outlined by its author, centered on three main concerns: a shortage of attorneys within the Office of the Attorney General's Office, which the bill aimed to help address; reports unverified of GPD employees not being able to reach the legal counsel; and lastly, three, the absence of a submitted workload output report from GPD's legal office covering an undefined timeframe. During the public hearing for the bill, GPD Legal Counsel Mr. James Mitchell presented a summary of the volume and complexity of cases he handled. He explained that the requested workload report was not submitted due to the sheer volume of legal work he was managing alone. Then-Chief of Police Paul Suba, along with former Chief Frank Ishizaki, both testified in opposition to the bill, underscoring the critical role legal counsel played in managing risk, ensuring procedural compliance, and protecting the department from legal exposure. Despite these objections, Public Law 30-202 was enacted in the years since. GPD has faced significant challenges in obtaining consistent responsive legal guidance. As the department's operational complexity, community engagement, and legal liabilities have increased, so too has the need for reliable legal counsel tailored to law enforcement operations. Reconsidering the restoration of in-house legal support for GPD is not simply a return to the past. It is a strategic step toward ensuring accountability, efficiency, and legal compliance in an increasingly demanding public safety environment. Why Bill 158-38 is critically needed: one, restoring a necessary function. This bill aims to address the unintended consequences of revoking GPD's authority to retain in-house legal counsel. The need for such support has not diminished. In fact, it has increased. As law enforcement becomes more regulated and legally complex, GPD must be equipped with professional legal support that is available daily, understands our operational realities, and is directly accountable to the department's leadership. Two, timely and reliable legal support for law enforcement decisions. Legal issues related to police work ranging from arrest and search warrants to policy compliance, labor matters, and civil litigation require immediate attention. Without internal legal counsel, GPD often experiences delays while waiting for assistance from external sources, which can lead to procedural errors, uncertainty for officers, and increased potential liability. Having an in-house staff attorney ensures real-time legal review, risk mitigation, and better informed operational decisions. Three, reducing the legal burden on non-legal personnel. Currently, personnel at the Guam Police Department, many of whom are uniform officers, are tasked with drafting legal responses, interpreting legal documents, and engaging in legal correspondence with courts, the Civil Service Commission, and attorneys. This approach is inefficient and unsustainable as it diverts sworn officers from their primary responsibilities. Hiring an in-house attorney would centralize and professionalize these legal functions, allowing command and frontline officers to concentrate on public safety. Four, strengthening policy, training, and accountability. In-house legal counsel will not only address reactive legal issues, but will also proactively assist in developing and reviewing policies, providing legal training, and ensuring compliance with local and federal mandates, including FOIA, Brady-Gieg-Leo disclosure rules, and labor laws. This role is essential for maintaining professionalism, transparency, and lawful operations in modern policing. Since January 2023 to date, our Legal Affairs section, which is staffed by a sworn police officer, has had to process the following: procurements: 697; Giglio-Brady request: 26; Civil Service Commission cases: 11; Internal Affairs cases: 270; active lawsuits: 2; total lawsuits in the past three years: 4; Freedom of Information Act request: FOIA 81; MOUs and MOAs: 22; pending legal opinions sent to the AGs? Only two. Fiscal note: In accordance with 9102 and 9103, Chapter 9, Title 2 of GPD, the department has prepared the following fiscal note to outline the estimated costs associated with implementing the authority granted by this bill. The department confirms that there is currently no funding available in its FY20 budget, 2025 budget, to cover the costs. The total estimated cost impact is $186,263.16, and there's a complete breakdown in the testimony provided. The total reflects the minimum investment required to onboard, equip, and operationalize a dedicated legal position within the department. While the cost is significant, the benefits greatly outweigh the cost. This includes the risk of potential lawsuits, delayed or inadequate legal responses, and diminished confidence in the department's legal integrity. In conclusion, our agency is responsible for enforcing the law around the clock. It is unacceptable that the Guam Police Department lacks immediate in-house legal support. The previous authorization for legal counsel within the department was eliminated without explanation, leaving GPD at a critical disadvantage. Bill 158-38 aims to rectify this issue. On behalf of the Guam Police Department, we respectfully urge this committee and the members of the 38th Guam Legislature to restore this vital authority and support the passage of this bill. This is not just an investment in the department, it is an investment in justice, safety, and sound governance of public law enforcement in Guam. We are also committed to collaborating with this committee and the entire 38th Guam Legislature to help the Guam Police Department achieve objectives for a safer community. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry. Thank you so much, Chief, for your testimony and to your senior team, the command staff, and all the men and women of the Guam Police Department. Those that are here, thank you again for your service to the people of Guam and obviously in supporting all of the public safety needs of this community. At this time, we're going to go through the question and answers from my colleagues here. And the Vice Speaker and the author of the bills asked to go last. So I'll begin with our committee member that's up here at this time. Senator Sabrina Salas-Mattonani, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to read up on your testimony, Chief, on point number two, timely and reliable legal support for law enforcement decisions. You said that GPD often experiences delays while waiting for assistance. How long of a delay, and how has it impacted, I guess, any of your investigations or anything that you're trying to accomplish?
Well, so you know, sometimes we need legal guidance in the middle of the night. We're investigating homicides, you know, robberies or some other criminal cases. And so, you know, we'd have to, you know, work with the AG's office, and you know, thankfully, the AG does answer his phone. But again, you know, having that prior experience, you know, I've been in the department long enough where we've had in-house legal counsel. And if we had any legal or procedural questions, we'd always have, you know, Jim Mitchell, Phil Tidinko, or even Jonathan Kwan, who was actually from the AGTDI to the Guam Police Department, always available 24/7. So it's having that ability to know that when legal matters come up, we have the ability to get legal answers right away.
Can you provide, though, an example where this delay may have impacted an investigation?
Not specifically, not off the bat. But you know, I do know that, for like example, right, I'm in transition right now of trying to move my evidence control section because we're going to be building a new building up in Jigo. I have evidence in criminal cases that are decades, decades old. You know, a bat from an aggravated assault, a stick, you know, from a bar fight or whatever. And we've submitted a long list, and I've gone through at least, even prior to this AG, I've gone through a list of chief prosecutors that I've given, that really very thick list of evidence that we're just holding on to for no reason. There's no prosecution, prosecution done, but we don't release evidence unless we get the Attorney General's Office to sign off on it. That has been since six years ago when I joined the Guam Police Department as chief. We've been trying to clear our evidence section. I have cars, traffic fatalities, arrests made, convictions already done. I have cars that, when I came in, I had to clear a lot of, like 67 cars, because they were just sitting around, not doing anything. They have no legal evidentiary proof. They have no legal evidential value, as far as I'm concerned, because we've had them for decades, and they haven't gone anywhere. So as we move to build that new Evidence Section in Jigo, what I don't want to do is carry junk, really, to the new facility when it's not evidence anymore. But I can't get rid of it unless I get an AG for the Chief Prosecutor to sign off on it. And, you know, it's a matter I've brought up with, like I said, previous AGs, this AG, and previous Chief Prosecutors, there's too many to name, you know, to name.
Well, one thing about this bill is it does kind of bring to the forefront, bring to light some of the legal kind of delays and issues that different agencies are having. For example, with the Department of Public Health and Social Services, a couple of weeks ago, when they appeared before the legislature on their budget oversight hearing, they were requesting or expressing the dire need to also hire an in-house legal counsel. And they provided documents, at least to my office, about several cases that have been, not cases, contracts and other issues that have been delayed. And AG, some of these cases since December, or I'm sorry, contracts since December of last year. And so I have not yet introduced a bill just yet regarding the authority to hire an in-house counsel for public health, but I have been working on it. So, Mr. AG, if you could provide us some information, I guess, on where you are with filling some of these, or hiring attorneys, because you did provide this breakdown, and maybe you could share it with the public on where you are in terms of recruiting and hiring.
Thank you, Senator Mattonani. I'm going to preface this by saying that of all the departments and all the cabinet officials in our government, this person is the most honest individual that I've had dealings with. He's like a brother to me. We're together fighting the criminals out there, the meth addicts, the wave of crime that's going on on Guam, a lot of it tied to repeat criminals and meth addicts. So it's with this response that I'm putting on my civil hat, as well as the criminal hat, that the Congress and you senators have provided in a single Attorney General. When you want to buy a Rolls-Royce, you better have the money for it. When you can't have the money for it, and I know Hyundai's going to take me out for this, you buy a Hyundai, you buy a motorcycle, you buy what you can afford. In the budget bill, and with Senator Duennas's tough committee that we've gone before to justify the funds that we're getting, we're basically just floating the last two Attorney Generals' budgets. We're getting by with what we've got. The government of Guam is not the federal government that can print money. We don't have the money to hire 96 attorneys, investigators, paralegals, staff, a larger office, and everything associated with a law firm. What I'm hearing today is what I would love to have, a fleet of 96 attorneys with that entire staff of attorneys. So Guan Guam is facing two major critical problems. We were bled dry with COVID, we don't have enough attorneys in the bar, and this isn't me saying it, as recently as Judge Sikola's award that she recently received, two of the judges on the panel specifically said Guam doesn't have enough attorneys. What do you do when you don't have enough attorneys? You do triage, you do short-term, long-term goals, Maslow's hierarchy of needs. When people are dying because of meth addicts out there, when we're getting terrorized every weekend because of the Guam Police Department having to respond to a meth addict that's going and shooting somebody in the head and dumping their body in Talafoco on the side of the road, us seeing on viral videos, things that you don't even want to show your children, is on the internet about a Guamanian, a Chamorro, a resident of Guam being murdered. What do you do? You hire the prosecutors. When I took over the AG's office two and a half years ago, I had eight prosecutors. When I left 20 years ago, we had 13 and a smaller size, we didn't have a crime problem back then. We've got a meth epidemic going now. So we've got, I started with eight, just checked right now, we have 20 prosecutors, 20 prosecutors. That is an amazing feat for my staff that has brought into Guam, and most of all of them are brought in from the United States, because Guam doesn't have enough. I know what the chief is saying, we're not perfect, I'm not perfect, but together as a team, we have been providing services, 96, we have 40, about 42 attorneys right now in that office, most of them are prosecutors right now. We have eight divisions. Eight divisions encompasses everything that you senators have told me to do as the Attorney General. And with the team, and I have got Lee Miller and Alberto to my right here, they are holding down our civil work, along with Joe Guthrie, who's in court right now. To manage a law firm when you've got criminal and civil, by the way, no other law firm on Guam has criminal prosecution authority. So I don't care how much the, even the autonomous agencies, especially the autonomous agencies who have this authority to hire a private attorney, pick up the phone and say, hey, Goju, you want to come over? I got the money, and you don't have to be under that guy that's in the Attorney General's office. That is a drain on our people of Guam and no authority. They can't, when somebody comes in, like what happened in the port, where somebody was assaulted down there in the news, that attorney cannot say, we're going to get a prosecutor to prosecute them in the Port Authority of Guam. They're not prosecutors. They're hired guns for some non-elected cabinet official or board that tells them what to do, you achieve my goal. Well, what does that do to me as the Attorney General when I'm using the same taxpayer dollars and say, we disagree with that, and we'll see you in court? Guess who's paying for it on both ends? You, me, all of us are paying for that attorney and the Attorney General's office and my staff, and that Port Authority of Guam attorney, because we're fighting in court. That's what I talked about, and this isn't new. This is from the National Association of AGs, where all of us get together, and it comes from England, quite frankly, and the federal government. You have one Attorney General that is chosen either by the king, the president, or elected by the people. Most every Attorney General in the United States and district attorney are all elected. We're directly accountable. So as much as I respect, and I love this guy right next to me, you can't do this to our government. We can't afford the Rolls-Royce, and we start parceling out public health. They're coming into you every day, every department, saying, we're not getting as fast service as we need from this Attorney General, and we want to hire an attorney. It's not necessarily the hiring of the attorney that I'm worried about, it's the lack of control of an elected Attorney General. I ran on a platform primarily, toughest AG on crime. That is what the people needed, that's what the people wanted, and that is what we're giving them. But there's also seven other, six other divisions in that office that deal with civil matters, providing the contract review, going to court to litigate cases, and so forth. Just, and this is with respect to the chief, but any director can be in this situation. They hire one attorney, it's not 158,000, it's going to be at least 250,000, because you're going to have to get the legal secretary, you're going to have to have the budget, to go into court, all the costs associated. It's what a law firm provides. When you have one law firm, everything is centralized and it's cheaper. But more so, what happens when there's a conflict? We're in district court right now as the AG's office, and there's, I think, six now officers that are being sued. Well, guys, you're going to have to hire six lawyers for each one of them in case they conflict out. The law protects an Attorney General's office, that Attorney General can actually do that, assign you from that division, assign you from that division, assign you from that division. Under the model that the directors are coming to you for, you can't do that. You're going to be having, not only, and by the way, that's why I say even 250,000 isn't enough. When you have a lot of litigation going on, you're going to have to hire your own private attorney, who's probably going to conflict it out anyways, because that attorney's going to have to represent the department, then you're going to have to hire six other attorneys for each one of them. And get ready for the cost to come in, because that's by the hour that they're going to charge the people of Guam. The Attorney General's office, that's the third element I talked about, one Attorney General that's Assistant Attorney General's salaried employees. So there's many different aspects to this, Senator Mattonani, but the bottom line is, do you have the money to buy a Rolls-Royce? Guam doesn't have the money. We can't even open the schools right now because of the federal government clawing back money. We're trying to build a hospital, and we can't even afford the current hospital. That's the insanity of what I'm seeing at the AG's office. But what do I do? I call up my chief prosecutor group, and I say, do you have enough prosecutors? And this is where the chief and I overlap. Half of his work is making sure the criminals get put into jail, that's why I answer that phone, because I'm dealing with the murders, I'm dealing with 24/7 criminal prosecution issues. When they need search warrants and other things, I send it off to the staff as requested. When you got a FOIA Act request where, you know, they want the documents in four working days, I send it off to the solicitors. We're not perfect, I can't get the stuff out quickly, but I do take phone calls, especially from this man. If he needs something quickly, I give it to him, because he is an honest and reputable person, and his officers are doing a great job. So as much as I don't like to oppose this bill, I think that it's important to point out the nuts and bolts of what's going on. And guys, the bottom line is, there was a reason why in 1998 era that Robert Underwood went to Congress and said, make the Attorney General like the governor of Guam, make the public auditor like the governor of Guam, put them in the Organic Act. You cannot remove me even if I had all the governors, senators up here wanting to, that bill that you guys got, to separate my authority. Congress gives us, that's our constitution, agree with it or don't agree with it, that's our constitution. You go to federal court, they'll slap you on the back of your hand if you try to violate that Organic Act. That's what we're talking about here. Chief Legal Officer of the government of Guam, Chief Prosecutor, Chief Law Enforcement Officer of the government of Guam. What is difficult about that equation? When you have a public health coming in here and saying that, I want to hire my attorney, what's my title for? If I can't be the single attorney for the entire government of Guam? So that's all the stuff that goes behind what we see in this bill. By the way, Tom, what's it, Mitchell, Attorney Mitchell, James Mitchell, worked for me 20 years ago. It was after I left when then-governor, we had an attack on the AG's office. First elected, they were trying to figure out what were the powers and duties, what's the role of the Attorney General, and so forth. That's why it went back to the Attorney General, because it's unconstitutional to take away the authority of the Attorney. Why didn't I even run for this job? I should have just been in private practice and just, you guys call me up, I'll charge you by the hour, and I'll do what you want. The Attorney General doesn't do what you want. The Attorney General protects the people of Guam, follows the law, and does what you guys tell me to do. So 96 attorneys is what I need as a budget to provide the chief what he wants, but even then, if you guys give the chief the money for it, I will commit to him today, and especially, I'm absorbing everything that he said. I do almost daily phone calls to the states on the people that are turning in their applications to us, to filter out the best of the best that I can find. I will commit to you senators and Mr. Chairman to recruit an attorney for the Chief of Police's use, but under the Attorney General of Guam, the elected Attorney General of Guam, the people of Guam. And I ask, if you're going to do this bill, just please send over the money, because it's going to cut short other needs in the office. And again, I have a staff of solicitors, they get, what is it, 50 departments, agencies, and boards in the government, daily, they get all that coming in. We try to prioritize it by need, importance. One of the mayors just contacted me yesterday, there's a priority that they need. And public health, I get their officials literally coming down to my office to harass us, stand in front of the clerks and demand to see the Solicitor General in our office. That's how, that's how, literally, two weeks ago, you know, I get a phone call, there's somebody down in third floor demanding to get their contract out for public health. Give me a break, what about the other departments and agencies? Let's look at the triage that goes on in the Solicitors Division, how important is it? I get it. You know, I'm trying to provide all the legal services needed, so, thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Attorney General. Just a couple of things to respond to on the points that you said. That's one of the reasons why, I guess, I've been kind of waiting on introducing the bill regarding public health, because of the line with the Organic Act and not overstepping it. But one of the things that really stands out to me was your talk about money, hiring, and prioritizing. And so that's something that some members here in the 38th Guam Legislature, in the majority, have been working on in looking at the numbers and prioritizing the responsibilities of the different government agencies. And what takes priority? You mentioned education, healthcare, public safety, those are things that I've been working on in prioritizing along with other senators, and I think you will be surprised in the next coming few days, possibly weeks, on what we come up with to demonstrate and show the people of Guam what truly should be the priority. And what you said, it is education, it is public safety, and it is healthcare, along with our economy. So thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Senator Nada, for introducing this bill. Thank you, Chief, and everybody that's here with us today, especially our men and women in uniform, thank you for everything that you do for the people of Guam to keep us safe.
Thank you, Senator Salas-Mattonani, and before I move on, I want to recognize also my colleague that has joined us this morning, Senator Shelley Calvo, thank you for being with us this morning as well. Moving on now, I'd like to recognize Senator Telotidegui, you are now recognized, and good morning to you.
Good morning, Senator and Chairman. Good morning to my colleagues. Of course, the men in blue and the women in blue, good morning, the Attorney General's office. I feel really safe right now, sitting here. Thank you so much for your dedication to the people of Guam and keeping us safe. You know, I just have a question, Attorney General. The Revantax, they have like, what, three, four attorneys that were hired by Revantax? I heard that there was a request for somebody from the Attorney General to actually go to Revantax, even though they have that many attorneys over there? Is there, was there a request from an assistant from the Attorney General's office to go to Revantax to assist them for something?
Thank you, Senator, for the question. Revantax is a, it's not considered like the Department of the Guam Police Department or other departments, the Department of Revenue Tax, specifically the governor, has control over taxation on Guam. The criminal side of it, I believe our office still has control in terms of the decisions to be made. You are correct, when I came in, there was a outflowing of the last administration's attorneys to the governor. I believe three of them went up to the Department of Revenue Taxation. There has been communications between our Solicitors Division cooperatively with the Department of Revenue Taxation on different issues. So I'm trying to remember specifically if there was an incident where one of our attorneys, one of them may have, one of them may have.
Yeah, it just, it just boggles me. I mean, here's this agency with three attorneys, three attorneys, and then they still tried to use the Attorney General's office.
That is occurring, and we remind them that why are you at Revantax if you can't serve the taxation purposes? And I'm trying to remember the name that, he was the end-all-be-all on Guam for taxation 20 years ago. He's since moved on, but I mean, yeah, they only had one attorney, and you were lucky if you had a tax attorney on Guam. I think there's very few of them. Bob Torres, the Chief Justice, was one of the tax attorneys, he's now the Chief Justice. But I mean, there was, Attorney Titanow, I think, is another one. So they're very few and far between, they're highly specialized in the Internal Revenue Code, understanding all the changes. So you're correct, I don't think those people are up there are able to be the tax attorney that Revantax had been using in the past, but they are contacting our office for different purposes.
Yeah, and if I'm not mistaken, there are not tax attorneys in the first place, so maybe they can, you know, assist GPD, you know, and come over there. I mean, they have tons of them there, but, you know, I do have a concern, you know, I was in the 30th Guam Legislature, along with one of my other colleagues, when we overridden the veto of the governor at the time on the bill that would repeal the attorney there because of lack of attorneys and the cost, it was very costly. It was overridden, and even by the senators, you know, 14, I think one was absent, 14 overridden it for a reason. And we're in this same predicament today. I mean, even worse, because one, you know, we've grown this government so much because of COVID and because of all this federal fund that was coming in and stacking it up, it's just grown. So we have to cut, and we're going to have to cut somewhere. You know, I've been going through the budget, looking at places that we can cut. Now, I did have on my comment to actually, you know, have a dedicated individual from the Attorney General's office dedicated to GPD. And if that's the case, I mean, chief, how are you going to, you know, cover this $186,000 price tag for this attorney? Is it already in your budget bill that you provided for FY26? Or do you have some excess revenue that you can cover it for one year at least?
In my testimony, we don't have the money to cover for it, but that's something I can go back and work with my administrative services officers. Again, you know, we do have officers that resign, retire, and so, you know, there's extra money, you know, when those salaries are not being used for that person anymore. So there's a possibility for us to cover it.
But it's not in the FY26?
It wasn't, yeah, we weren't tracking this to be introduced, but it's something, and that's why we pointed out that we would also request funding for it.
You know, when the question was asked by one of my colleagues, you know, can you name an incident, you know, that's really in dire need? I was really shocked. I was really shocked because if it was such in dire need, you would have had a list in front of you of exactly circumstances that you have where you needed the attorney right away and they were not able to provide you assistance, but you couldn't even mention that. So I was really, you know, surprised. If someone is in dire need, they would at least say that. Give me the SOP on, on clearance of evidence. What is your, the operating procedures for clearance of evidence? That you said you had six years of boxes of evidence trying to get rid of?
Yeah, no, so when I came in, in, in 2019, uh, one of the things that we were, we've been trying to tackle is clearing out our evidence section. Uh, we have evidence from 20, 30 years ago. Uh, when I came in, that whole area across the United Hangar, uh, if you remember, if you've ever visited that place, the Guam Police Department used to store impounded vehicles there. And let me tell you, it was a mess when I came in in 2019. And I had to, we had to work hard to clear that. We almost, I think 67 cars, traffic fatalities, criminal investigations, uh, other impounded vehicles. And, uh, you know, we were sitting on, you know, we, there wasn't even an authorized, remember, GPD does not own an authorized, functioning, licensed impound lot. But yet we go around treating different places like impound lots. The crime lab up in Mangila was full. We, we, we don't have any more space to park it. We use Bello Road, the other, uh, evidence control section. It's another place where we have cars, we have cars stacked on top of cars. Uh, we need to get rid of them, uh, but unless I can get, you know, the, the proper legal authorization to get rid of it because they, they were confiscated or impounded as evidence, I can't get rid of it. I have bats, sticks, knives, you know, from decades ago. Uh, when I move into the new building, I, I don't think it makes any sense to bring evidence, bats, knives, sticks that you, the case has been adjudicated, probably never prosecuted, you know, we, we confiscated it because it was used in a crime, but we have no need for it anymore. So, so those are the kind of things that I, I need to clear, get rid of, you know, and that's the kind of stuff I talked about.
So can you explain to me though, what is your process in doing it? That the Attorney General, it's making it sound like in order for you to get rid of this, it's the hindrance of the Attorney General that's not allowing you?
Yes, because that, that, remember, that's his role and function.
Okay.
He's the chief prosecutor and so he has to clear evidence.
Okay, so then you have to go to him to get rid of evidence? Okay, Attorney General, can you respond?
So thank you. And, and this is an example of why an attorney at GPD would be useless. Because they don't prosecute, they don't go to trial, they don't go through the whole discovery with the judiciary. It's the Attorney General prosecutor that do that. So the chief is right, since he came, since I came into office in 2023, we've had at least two meetings. They need to reduce the load of inventory and I'm in agreement, we got to get rid of that stuff. So the process is normally, um, you know, they've got the inventory control. Um, they send, you get a victim oftentimes or a defendant coming and filling out the form, and I think we have it online. And then it gets sent to our office and then our prosecutor looks at it, that's assigned to the case, and then decides whether we keep it or we don't keep it. Guys, this is why I'm saying, or excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, this is why I'm saying COVID really messed, talk to the courts, how bad COVID pushed everything back? The trials, the defendants, waiving speedy trial, um, cases that are more than five years old, four years old, talk to the judiciary administrator, they'll give you a rundown on how many cases are pre-trial. The prosecutors normally don't want to release evidence if we got a trial coming up because we're going to lose the trial when the defense attorney says, where's the evidence? Oh, we released it, that sort of thing. So, but we can also document it, there's ways to deal with it. It just requires administrative man-hours on our side to clear up their inventory. So again, I'm not perfect, we're not perfect. But when I got a trial where there's a whole bunch of defense attorneys on all four criminal court judges asserting speedy trial, where I need four defense attorneys and all the staff to win that, I'm sorry, I can't look at the inventory control for my prosecutors. We got to do the daily magistrates and I'm asking to pass the anti-crime bill. Stop letting us have to deal with the weekends. The chief of police's, the, the Attorney Generals, and the court, don't count weekends for the 48-hour, uh, magistrates. So much of our energy at the office is getting prosecutors to come in, what is it, six days a week in order to deal with the magistrates. That pulls away my prosecutors from sitting down, looking at the case. You don't just look at a case and say, oh, we got an inventory release, and say, oh, we're going to release it or not release it. You need to pull the file in, bring the investigator in, talk about where the case is at, then decide, do we need this or not? Because you're, you're being told to predict what the trial is going to look like right now because you've got an inventory release form. But the chief is right. Not only don't they have an impound lot, and by the way, please fund an impound lot for them, because if I put between the difference between keeping a car that has a murder scene, um, the blood on it and everything, and not keeping it, we need to keep it. Or meth that was in that car that the defense attorney is going to try to dismiss the case because we don't have the car or that was involved in it? They need an impound lot. They need the money for it to rent it, they need a piece of property. But we're talking money again. So he needs something, we're their lawyers, we got the law firm, we got the, the, the infrastructure for this. The best economic way of doing it, short-term plan, fund the AG's office and then let us work on it. But I'm making, by the way, I'm making a list here on how I can better help the chief. I'm going to talk to the, the staff in there to see what we can do for the inventory control. But that has nothing to do with the bill. Because that attorney at the, uh, Police Department won't be able to clear the evidence. He's not a prosecutor. What I highlighted earlier, he can't enforce the criminal laws, he's not going to do the criminal trial, it's going to be the AG's office.
Okay, do, can you actually have an individual from your office, Attorney General, to be dedicated to the Guam Police Department?
If you give me the, the funding for it, I can. I need 90, 96 attorneys, it's in the budget bill, the money is there. We're nowhere close to that. We're at a $20 million budget, we probably need $40 to $50 million for the AG's office to even come close to 96. We only have 40 attorneys. So you guys tell me, when we get a murder that can happen today because of some meth addict going off on a binge, do I take that attorney, my prosecutor, and put him at the, uh, public, the Guam Police Department who can't even do a trial because he's dealing with all the administrative work? Or do we go into the court and get that magistrate done so that guy gets a court order, gets put in prison versus if we don't charge him in 48 hours, he's free? That murder is on the street.
Chief, um, do you actually have an attorney standing by, ready to work for the Attorney General's, I mean, to, for the Guam Police Department?
Uh, no ma'am.
It's very difficult to find one, I can tell you that. You know, I have, I oversee judiciary as well and they're having issues in that scenario too as well, so. Um, I know my time is, uh, almost up, Mr. Chair, but, um, I think we need to find, uh, a solution here that's a win-win. Um, one of the biggest things that I've, I've always tackled, and you know, Chief, I've been brought to you about the impound lot, about providing an evidence place for you. I mean, I'm worried, trying to work, um, with you on that and we can't seem to find a location. That's the problem here. You know, and then the money, you know, once we find, you know, the allocation and the money that comes into play, and right now we have to cut a lot of areas. So I'm asking the Attorney General's Office at your oversight to, you know, assist the Attorney, um, GPD with getting rid of those evidence, um, that is no longer needed.
Absolutely.
And work with him closely on that because, you know, that's always been a thorn in his side. And at the same time, if we can find a way to, you know, a win-win here, utilizing an Attorney General that's dedicated to GPD, I think that will cover everything, even on the unconstitutionality and keeping what we put in place, which was hiring an Attorney General by the people of Guam, not making this political. Because that's what's happening, you know? It's, it's become very political and it's cost who? The people of Guam, the money, our money that can go to places in our, in our agencies and, and assist the people of Guam with, with their needs. But no, sometimes this becomes very political because somebody doesn't like somebody else and they want to mess with it that way. And I, I, I don't, I see it and I'm not going to agree to this type of, you know, mismanagement of funding just because somebody doesn't like somebody. So, um, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity. And again, thank you for the men and women in blue and the Attorney General's Office. Thank you.
Thank you Senator Tadegui. Uh, thank you. And moving on now, we, um, now ask Senator Chris Duennius. Uh, I recognize you and good morning to you, Senator.
Sidozmasi, Mr. Chairman and Senators, and of course, our Attorney General and our Chief of Police. You know, this is a classic situation, really. Uh, you have a law, uh, that was in place for legal counsel. The history shows for the Guam Police Department. You have another law, that bill that became law, that removed that attorney. And now we're back looking to restore a law. But what I see common here throughout the entire discussion is, this really boils down to legal services. And I can sympathize with the chief, um, and the Attorney General because really what you're talking about here is the ability to have legal counsel for the purposes of the very important work that you do, uh, to shield the officers and the work that they're doing, um, and the vital work that they're doing. Like the Attorney General said, you're not, you're not going to be taking attorney for the purpose of attorney that's going to go to court and prosecute criminals and do that kind of extraneous work outside of. But what, what they do need is they need the ability to process contracts. They do need the ability for the officers to, uh, build their cases and, and their information, and they do need, you know, the, the service. So this is, this is the classic impasse that I see here. I don't think I need to belabor the point in terms of where we're at because I'm just going to say, the common theme and the common issue is legal representation and legal services. So I think that's going to be the challenge of the committee on the markup with the bill. And you know, General, this is, this is really, it's been a tug of war government-wide. Uh, because you have autonomous agencies that have their attorneys. You have special circumstances to which we have attorneys in this government that are using government revenue and resources, whether it be generated through fees because of their autonomy, or whether it be generated by the general fund appropriations from this Agus body. So there's no uniform answer right now because it's all over the place. But I think in this case, certainly, uh, the markup and the discussion and certainly, going forward, we're going to have to find a way to, to heal this impasse, to ensure that what you're requesting, General, is saying that, you know, I need these services. But there also has to be a clear delineation too with the legal services that, that the executive agencies require. You know, and, and, and it is true, that can get caught up in political banter. But at the core is, the services required and needed. Um, because of timely issuances of, of procurement and things like that, and also for the very integral work that people in law enforcement, like you said, you're prosecuting, you're, you're, you're getting rid of the bad guys, you're doing what you need to do court-wise. These guys are on the front line because they're doing everything to scoop those guys up and get them to you, uh, in a way that they can, you know, effectuate the law. So I'm just commenting because I think this is going to be the work of the committee. Uh, and also this is the work of the legislature and hopefully the executive branch going forward, you know, to say, we, we're going to find a resolution to this. If that's fully funding the Attorney General's Office, you know, uh, as, as the, as the body or, or how else this is going, this impasse can be, can be, um, you know, brought, brought to pass to eliminate.
And Senator, may, may I just put it on the table here? If you give us the funding, and I'm not even saying 158,000 because I can find lesser attorneys for the, uh, and still do the work. You give us the funding, I will commit to the chief and to the officers here. I will recruit an attorney specifically, full-time, we'll go and MOU with the, the chief and hire him. Because you will specifically tell me, hire this attorney for the chief, and this is the funding for it.
And that's where I'm saying, I'm, in my mind, with the way I'm envisioning that, if, if we do it as this bill being, uh, the catalyst for that is, is constructing somehow a definition that's in the law that's clear in terms of the services provided. Because-
Simple, just give the funding.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll do it. Because we don't need the statute to do that.
Uh, because what I'm saying, General, is I, I will tell you that, and you're going to see it, as other senators said, 50 million's off the table. I mean, that's just not going to happen. It's, it's not, it's not feasible, it's not in the budget, it's just not there. So my point is, is that as we attack this situation, what I'm seeing is entities coming before us saying, we need these legal services, this would be the cost. You know, that's, that's the portability, basically. Where is that attorney? What work are they doing? As, and, and I think that's the impasse that, that the agencies have had is, the discussion of, you know, if, if it's coming out of the Attorney General's Office and we don't feel like we're getting the representation and the legal services we need, then I think that's really what's driving this.
Absolutely. I, I hear the pain, but when you don't have the, the supply, you can't meet the demand. And I, that's why I keep alluding to the Supreme Court of Guam. We don't, even the, the defendant, indigent defense, when I came in 2020, it fell apart. There wasn't enough attorneys to even represent the defendants. But I mean, okay, so the chief is here, we're here today to talk about it, provide the funding, I will commit to you as the Attorney General, he'll get his funding, no bills need to be passed, he'll get his attorney. And I'll, probably within 30 days, I can recruit one from the states to get in. But what, tomorrow, you're going to get public health, and that's fine. Public health wants to come in and get their own attorney, as long as they're under the AG's office, I'll recruit another one for public health. And then we're going to have customs coming in, wanting their attorney, then we're going to have another one coming in. This guy is doing the best, uh, he's creating the most impact for Guam by keeping us safe. So to me, I'm in full agreement, we need to get him, uh, his own counsel like Jim Mitchell was when we assigned him over there way back 20 years ago. So that, this is the priority, and, but that's your decision on what are the priorities of government? Public health comes in and satisfies your need, an additional 150,000, whatever? I'll do it. But you see, this is what the AG's offices in the past have done. I did it 20 years ago, but we had lawyers to do it with. And then we had the funding too. So usually what is done is that we have one attorney for two departments depending upon their needs, but the chief, clearly, it looks like they need a, um, because, you know, they're arresting people, the defense attorneys, people wanting to sue his staff, stuff like that, but I mean, but yeah, I'll, I'll leave it up to you Senators. It will be done, but you don't need the statute to do it.
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm convinced that the author of this bill and the co-sponsors, along with your committee, will do a responsible markup on this bill going forward. We're going to have to find a solution and that's where it will lie. Chief, uh, Mr. AG, I know we'll be communicating through the process of this bill and see if there's any way that we can, uh, uh, you know, form a, a solution that's amicable for both sides. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Senator Duennius and appreciate your, uh, you being here today. Uh, I now, uh, ask Senator Barnett, good morning to you and, uh, you have the floor. Thank you.
Sidozmasi, uh, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity, uh, to speak, uh, this morning. And I as well just wanted to officially, um, lodge my deepest condolences to the people of the CNMI and the family of the late Governor Arnold Palacios, just officially on the record, sir. Um, and wow. Uh, Mr. AG, I liked your, your characterization that you're sitting next to your, uh, brother. And you know, I've seen brothers disagree before and it's usually worse than what we're seeing, uh, this morning, so, uh, thank you, thank you for that. And you know, as a, as a co-sponsor of the, uh, bill, I just have to say, I'm not trying, in your testimony, you said that the bill supports the Governor's attack upon my hiring prosecutors and assistant AGs as the peoples mandated that I do to serve and protect them. Uh, you have my support 100% in co-sponsoring this bill. We're really just listening to the concerns of, uh, the chief and, you know, this is the process, so I'm very grateful that we're, we're kind of hearing the other shoe drop this morning and getting your, uh, perspective on this. And I'm also encouraged by the good news, the increase in the hiring of prosecutors at your office. I know that, uh, when you were short, it was making the headlines, so I'm hoping that you could get, uh, equal coverage on that because that's definitely a, a positive. Um, and I think that's really the meat and potatoes of what your office, uh, is designed to do. But there is that kind of unsexy part about the contract review, FOIA requests. And, and so I kind of just wanted to ask, because when the chief says that, uh, since January of '23, the Legal Affairs, uh, section, which is staffed by sworn police officers, had to process the, the following, and, and you have the testimony, so I won't belabor the point and, and go through the number of things they said they had to process. So at any time in this period, was your office approached? And then I guess I'll ask Chief Ignacio first, yeah?
Yes. Uh, of course, uh, I still have to reach out to the Attorney General's Office. Foyas, you know, we get FOIAs that we're not very clear on. Uh, again, you know, we're not lawyers, so we, we would reach out, uh, to the Attorney General's Office. And, uh, we, you know, we, we all, we, we have an established, uh, relationship with them. Uh, but again, you know, like, is that, having the in-house, uh, we wouldn't have we wouldn't have to reach out to them. But you know, to the General's point, yes, he is available when we call him. And so I'd like to thank him and his staff, you know, that they're always answering their phones when we call them. But again, you know, we're just one of many agencies. And so just like anything else, you know, like he said, things have to be prioritized. And so we've had many civil service cases recently where we've had the need and the use for an attorney down there.
So the Attorney General is committed on the record to recruit someone specifically for the department. I think the window I heard was 30 days. Are you satisfied with that information? Because that's something new that we're hearing this morning.
Yeah, again, this is, you know, old news to me that, you know, we're going to, he's going to offer up an AG to hire, to be assigned to us. Remember Jonathan Kwan? He was from the AG's office and he was assigned to the Guam Police Department. You know, but of course, he had, was given a job as a magistrate judge. So that's the reason why he left us. And since then, we've been trying to fill that void with the loss of Attorney or Judge Kwan. Again, like, you know, we go through history. Jim Mitchell, Phil Tidinko, Robert, the late Senator Robert Klitsky was one of our first legal counsels during, I think, Chief Scambler's time. Yeah, so we have a long history of having in-house legal counsel. And you know, it was just something that we wanted to pursue.
Right, yeah. And I agree, I mean, I think having a counsel, whether it's in-house or somewhat detailed from the Attorney General's office, especially for a lot of these reviews and civil issues, really protects the department from exposure. Because, you know, I don't want to rub you the wrong way, chief, but I've made FOIA requests to you and I'm not satisfied that justification for the withholding of information was consistent with the law. And I think, you know, with all due respect, that's what happens when you have people who aren't necessarily barred attorneys doing things that attorneys should do. So, AG, I wanted to ask you, you know, in terms of recruitment, is it easier to recruit people to do this type of thing? I mean, I'm just thinking in my head, these are the people who are just out of the bar and they get stuck with, you know, two-foot-high stack of contracts to review. So in terms of the challenges presented by recruiting prosecutors versus the type of attorney that would do specifically these contract reviews and-
Let's talk in those terms logistically.
Sure.
So you talk about a procurement document, right? So a procurement document, even if you had an in-house counsel that wasn't part of the AG's office, they're going to do what a clerk does. They're going to put the, make sure that the procurement records together and guess who they're going to send it to? The Attorney General. But if it came out of the Attorney General's office, one of our MOU types we send you over there, that person can literally help with the procurement as the chief needs and then sign off on my signature line and say that the Attorney General's office is reviewed. It goes to the next step. So, and yes, I can find attorneys that are within the 70,000 to 90,000 range, that this is administrative work. They're not going to be hired as prosecutors. But you know, they're out there. And especially the United States, where we're getting the applications in. But I'm trying not to bring in the ones that cause additional issues administratively, whatever. But I mean, find the best and the brightest and bring them in to serve my client, which is all of us.
Thank you for that, AG. And I think just as an aside, it's been pretty consistent what we're seeing in a lot of these public hearings is as the Finance Committee is really pushing for status quo budgets or reduced budgets. What we're seeing is people like Attorney General Doug Moylan, Chief of Police Steve Ignacio are coming before the body and they're saying, hey, I can't get by on status quo. You know, I need funds to hire attorneys. I need funds to just actually meet the critical services that our government's obligated to provide. So I just wanted to kind of state that. And you know, you characterize the relationship between you and the chief as brothers. And I think that, you know, family fights sometimes. But also when we sit down and exchange our ideas in a setting like this and come up with, you know, what looks to me like a solution to the very valid and real challenges that GPD is facing in terms of legal review of the stated items and the chief's testimony. And we can resolve these issues. I think that's what the people of Guam, they enjoy that when we can come together and work together and hammer out solutions despite our differences. So Sidus Massey, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak this morning.
Thank you so much, Senator Barnett. Senator Calvo, you are now recognized. Good morning to you, ma'am.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Sidus Massey. Good morning, everyone. Buenos. Thank you for being here. Thank you for all your testimonies. And first, before my remarks, I wanted to thank each one of you here for your continued protection for the people of Guam, both GPD and OAG. You know, this bill, I co-sponsored this bill. So I thank the author for the invitation. And I just wanted to state why I co-sponsored it. This bill comes from a place of good intention. You know, the whole purpose of this bill is truly not to undermine the great work that the AG's office is doing for the people of Guam and for our island. But truth be told, it's really to streamline the process and that's why I support it. The intent of this is really to take care of legal issues, streamlining the process and obviously reduce, help, not reduce, but help the AG's office as well. Because it will, it can free up the Office of Attorney Generals focus on broader litigation and criminal prosecution duties by shifting civil advisory work to in-house GPD counsel. GPD could actually hire counsel focused on law enforcement-related civil issues such as use of force policies, public records, labor matters or liability claims. Technically, the whole intent is really just to give GPD real-time legal advice without waiting for any availability. But obviously, like I mentioned earlier, this is really not to undermine the Office of the General's great work, but just to streamline the process. I don't really have further question at the moment because obviously, we have tackled the concerns. And within the committee, I guess we're just going to work along with my other colleagues. We're going to work on refining the bill and tightening the bill and with consideration, in consideration of the AG's recommendation. And obviously, we're all here wanting to work together and give an offer what's best for the people of Guam. So on that note, we'll wait for the markup meeting and all the other recommendations and comments that will come in. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Appreciate your time, the time.
Thank you so much, Senator Calvo. Now I will yield to the author of the bill for his questions. Vice Speaker Ada, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the Attorney General's office and to the men and women of GPD for being here today. A lot of good questions went back and forth and perhaps a lot of commitments from the AG's office to provide to the Guam Police Department. And I think that's, that's why we're here. Is that for that one reason, to ensure that GPD has legal representation. And you know, we haven't seen that for many years since the enactment of 30-202, 15 years ago, right? And perhaps even before that. So I personally am amenable to having the AG designate GPD's counsel. However, I will amend the existing law to require the AG not to leave GPD without counsel. And we heard the commitment from the AG's office that that counsel will be committed to the Guam Police Department. And that means GPD will be made a priority. Double jeopardy means that if GPD makes a mistake, there's no second chance at another trial if a person, if a guilty person is acquitted because of improper investigations or handling of evidence. And that's what we're here, is just to hammer these things out, come down to a solution, working with each other and both coming out with something that would be, like I said, important to the men and women in the department and also to the Attorney General's office. Lawsuits against the GPD can also be avoided with adequate representation to avoid complaints against the department and its officers. Again, it doesn't matter to me who provides the legal advice to the department. What does matter is that when GPD gets legal, that GPD gets legal advice when it's needed, first and foremost. And again, Mr. Chair, I thank the committee for hearing this bill. I thank for the department and the AG's office for coming down to provide testimony. I look for the, working on the markups and coming out with something that both the AG and the Guam Police Department will be accepting. And I believe that with the commitments made today by the Attorney General, working with the Chief of Police and the men and women, again, I'm just grateful that we got to this point. And you know, like the chair on OFP has said, you know, perhaps $186,000 is easier to find than $30 million. We can at least work to doing that and providing the department with legal counsel that's needed. Again, Mr. Chair, thank you for this opportunity and I thank everyone for being here today to testify on this bill. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Ada. I just wanted to, before we close this out, I just wanted to make one, I guess, statement if I would. And it's more of a clarification to the community too. When I first was elected and when I first got sworn in, the first person I met with is the Attorney General of Guam. The second person that I met with when I first got sworn in is the other guy that's sitting next to him, the Chief of Police. And I think that, I wanted to say that for the record to, so the folks can understand that the synergy between the two, between the Office of the Attorney General and the Guam Police Department is absolutely critical to ensuring that we keep our community safe. And this bill is kind of what I was asking both of them. And I think that today, I think we're seeing that, believe it or not, seven months later, this conversation is now in the public square, if you will. But I can sense there's an absolute commitment to work together and to help this community be safe. And I think that most people, as we're watching, can probably attest. I just wanted to say that, if I could, for the record. The Committee on Public Safety, unless there's anything else from our close. The Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Management and your Guam National Guard appreciates the attendance and participation of all senators and community stakeholders